...everyone here tonight. If you would, please stand for the pledge of allegiance followed by the prayer which Chief Walz will lead to prayer after the pledge. Glad to have him and Sheriff Beasley with us tonight. Thank y'all for being here.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Y'all join me. Dear Lord Jesus, all the authority is yours, Father God, and Lord, I know that you give leaders authority. God, I pray that you'll keep them safe, give them wisdom, give them guidance, Father God, keep them healthy. Lord, guide us and direct us tonight in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Chief Walz. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda presented tonight? I would like to move grand construction, Dr. Byrd up and Dr. Combs to spot. There's no objection, but other than that, do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Motion by Mr. Uvay, seconded by Mr. Kirk. Those in favor, aye. Those opposed, motion passed. Are there any additions to the agenda? Next item is the consent agenda. Would anyone like to remove any item for discussion? If not, then we have a motion to approve. Motion by Mr. McCann, seconded by Mr. Davidson. Those in favor, aye. Opposed, motion passed. Yes. No, we don't have any. There's not any extra field trips in the booking room.
There weren't.
Oh, it was?
I think the motion would add those two. We have three.
That's the field request. Do we have a motion to approve the three additional field trips? Motion by Mr. Jenkins, seconded by Mr. Clark. Those in favor, aye. Opposed, motion passed on the field trip. Next, we have, we're gonna move Dr. Byrd up, Director of Instruction to report next.
Okay, Ms. Sharon. I want to start tonight with our American Fidelity Teacher of the Month. This month, we have Miss Stephanie Tedford, who is a third grade teacher from Otoka Elementary. And Lisa Rose, her principal's here tonight. She said the following about Ms. Tedford. Ms. Tedford consistently demonstrates high ideals, professionalism, knowledge, and the ability to keep students become, to help students, excuse me, become the best they can be. Students love her because she is kind, loving, and truly cares about them. She is a leader among her peers by leading her team in planning and executing lessons that are tailored for each student. So, Ms. Tedford, if you will come forward, we will present you with your award. Tedford and I go way back. I was a third grade teacher at Brighton Elementary when she was hired. We worked side by side out in the four building, inside the building together, so we go way back. But very well deserved, so thank you, Ms. Tedford, for all you did. Tonight, we have Otoka Elementary students and a teacher. Ms. Joyner. This year, as the board knows, we provided SAM Labs equipment and instructional materials to each of our elementary schools to help introduce our youngest students to STEM and coding through related arts classes. And so, Ms. Joyner has brought some students here tonight to share this curriculum and demonstrate how the students are able to utilize it. So, Ms. Joyner, I will turn it over to you.
Tonight, we're gonna be using Wonder, it's a dash robot, by Wonder Workshop. And the kids have been working super hard. Don't go ahead and put your hat down. But they have, they have all of this under control already. It's ours.
My name is Derry. We're studying the solar system in science class. We learned about the sun and all the planets and their relationship.
My name is Elijah. In STEM class, we have created a Mars rover and several different coding activities. We also researched the solar system.
My name is Sophia. And in our most recent class activity, we created a map of our solar system and we coded our robot to travel through it.
They worked hard in class in science, learning all about the solar system right after Thanksgiving. And so, we took that one step further and then let them code their robot after they created their map of the solar system. So, their robot is gonna travel to each planet. And one of the down signs is, really should take over sometimes. So, our iPads are used in every class. And so, sometimes the voices get recorded over. And so, most of these voices are their voices. Some of these voices might be students in other classes. And so, we tried to make sure it was just theirs, but if y'all wanna go ahead. So, he'll start on the sun. And who do we have today? What robot did we bring?
Discovery.
Discovery.
Discovery. We named all of our robots. Y'all remember who we named them after? We have Apollo, Discovery, and Atlantis. We named them after shuttles from NASA. All right, so he's coming ready to hit start.
They'll just like you.
Oh, it's the new technology. They worked super hard on the code. If you wanna show them the code that we have on there, it's super long. And then, they, just getting one of the codes out, the whole thing would get messed up. And then, they would have to go back and figure out where they were wrong and fix it. And I'm so impressed that they were able. And I have several groups that have actually able to complete the traveling through the solar system with the robot. It's been very fun watching them. I hope they enjoy doing it.
Looks like they have.
That's awesome. We appreciate y'all being here.
Thank you.
We're gonna need to borrow light. Who was that, Discovery? Maybe for inclement weather checking or something. We may need to borrow him.
He has a lot of the default pounds that I thought, probably not be the best for schools. Preston has sent some items that she'd like for the students to pass out. Remember, we're appreciating these. So, they're gonna bring those around. We thank y'all for all that y'all do.
So excited to see where we're at. Yeah, absolutely. It's why we say it's what we do. Absolutely. All right, so I have a few more things and then I'll conclude my report. We do have a new principal at Austin P., and that is Ms. Heather Preston. I don't think she was able to make it. I thought she might, but she's not. So, Ms. Heather Preston has been named Principal of Austin P. She started last week, so she's a few days in, doing an excellent job. We're excited about that. Board retreat. We will have a board retreat. We emailed a little bit about this. It'll be February 24th, from 8:00 to 4:00. This is our tentative schedule at the EMS building in Brighton. We are, Dr. Combs and I are in the process of working on that agenda and finalizing the plans for the day. And we will share that out with you just as soon as it's ready. The next textbook adoption meeting, I told you this last month, but I explained that I would remind you. It is January the 24th at Cresview Middle School. The vendors will be there to present to the teachers from 7:45 until 11:30. Then, our teachers will take a lunch break. Then, the committee members will come back together here at the board to begin discussing the materials and how it aligns with our adopted standards and so forth. And of course, as we said last month, you guys are invited to attend if you'd like to participate. So, January 24th, Cresview Middle, 7:45. And then, the last thing I have, our current plan is to rebid substitute teacher services for 23, 24. I know that we've had some discussion about that. This process will begin in the coming days. We'll have to place a bid in the leader and on our webpage. And then, we'll go from there, but I did want to make the board aware that that is the current plan. And that's all I have unless someone has questions.
Got a question?
Sure.
Did our new principal come from inside our system or from the board?
Yes. She was previously, Dr. Combs helped me out. I think all of her roles have been, I think she started as a bus driver and Heather Preston. A bus driver and a teacher assistant, and then became a teacher. Was a teacher at Munford Elementary and maybe Brighton Elementary. And she was an assistant principal at Drummond's. And I hope I don't leave anything out. Then, she became an instructional coach. And now, she's a principal. So, she's had several. Yes, absolutely. We're excited about her.
I can't remember what they are exactly, but by the next meeting, then the bids will be, end before the next meeting for the.
For substitute teaching?
Yeah.
Well, we'll run the bid in the paper and then we will, possibly, yes, possibly. Just depends on how quickly we can get it printed in the leader. Then, we usually run it for at least two weeks, so maybe. And then, we will have some presentations where the bids will come and present, not before meeting, but.
When do you think this will? They should come to ours.
March-ish?
May, March. I have a projected timeline, but it's on my desk. I'm sorry, I didn't bring it in here, but I can send it to you.
Ballpark guess would be good around that.
March, April.
Okay.
That's my ballpark guess.
And we will have a number of teachers from each school that are gonna be involved in, or at least each grade level will be involved in when these vendors come in and we look at. They're gonna be a part of that. They're gonna be in there listening. We haven't had them as involved in the past, but they're gonna be. They're gonna be a part of that and they're gonna hear the, you know, what all those vendors are saying, be able to ask questions and all that kinda good stuff, since they're the ones dealing with it most of the time.
Do you have more involvement this year than we've had in the past with the public? I guess in the school board adoption process, I mean the.
In textbook adoption?
Yeah.
We have parents on the committee. I believe, you're testing my memory tonight. I believe we have one parent from each school on the textbook adoption committee. Yes, sir. So, thirteen.
Are there any other questions for Dr. Byrd? Thank you, Dr. Byrd.
Thank you.
Next item is discussion of the authority of the director of students regarding a resolution on the jewel litigation. We had our attorney client meeting earlier with Zoom with Deborah Owens. And she gave us our recommended options. And we're up before discussion on the jewelry lawsuit that we've been in since 2019. Dr. Combs, do you want to add anything?
No, sir. I believe the two options she discussed, as y'all know, number one, if we're gonna go ahead and, you know, accept their recommendation, which was to go ahead and, you know, accept whatever comes out of that. And then, also, you know, if y'all wanna make a recommendation as far as putting the executive group in charge of, you know, signing that when it comes in in February and making a decision there.
Yeah. Once the will of the board, is there any discussion on this or?
I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the jewel litigation settlement based on our lawyer's recommendations and that we also allow our executive committee to sign the release.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Jenkins. We have a second by Mr. Jenkins. Are there any questions or discussion on? All those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed, motion passed. Thank you. Dr. Combs, update.
Yes, sir. So, a couple things, y'all. I've been putting the Devo that we shared the principal's meeting with y'all, so I put that one in there. I like this one in particular because we all know the world's full of people who talk and talk and talk some more, but talking for the sake of talking does nothing, as a matter of fact. It's just a little bit annoying. So, a little sign up there, watch out for people who are always bragging about who they are. A lion never has to tell you it's a lion. Isn't that right, Sheriff? That is, that is correct. And then, you know, great story there from Genesis with Abraham and Isaac. And, you know, not a whole lot of talk in there, just a whole lot of walking. He did exactly what he was asked to do. So, anyway, I just put that in there for you. Feel free to hang it in your refrigerator or stick it right in there. So, next one, in your sheet there, I'm gonna just give you, you have a breakdown of ESER funding that's been spent or encumbered thus far per school. So, Ms. Catherine Huffman put this together for us. She's kinda overseeing that part of it. And write this number down. This is not on the sheet. Our total ESER funding that came to us and that we have to spend out by 2024 is $27 million, $745,000, So, thus far, as you can see on that sheet, we have spent or encumbered $19,626,239.37. With that said, ESER 1, 100% of it's been spent. Now, that's mostly what we use for that technology, one-to-one, all that kinda good stuff, right? ESER 2, a lot of roof money went through ESER 2, okay? And that has 95% been spent. ESER 3 is what's left, and we're sitting on about 50% of that being spent thus far. So, we do have more things ordered. Again, those are more HVAC units, all that stuff you've seen, the CTE pieces, continuing that learning loss coordinator for one more year at each one of the schools. All that is in that that we have not spent yet, okay? So, I just wanted to give you a breakdown per school, so you'll kinda have an idea of what that looks like for you to have there. And then, you know, any questions you have, of course, welcome to ask those. And then, you can see the per school expenditure. And then, my last thing that I wanted to share, I've had some conversation with the sheriff. And, you know, we're really proud of the fact that we're able to put SROs in every building. I mean, it's been really, the communities loved it, the schools love it. I think the law enforcement loves it, you know, being able to be in there and do that. But there are also some things that come with that. And one of the things that the sheriff brought up to me was possibly being able to house a safe in the two schools. I remember the sheriff's department has an SRO at Drummond's Elementary and Austin P. But when he brought this idea to me, I thought it would be great for us to be able to share it with you because I think we need this situation in every one of our schools. And, you know, in the case, Lord forbid, of any kind of active shooter situation, anything like that, basically, you have an SRO in each building with a block on their hip or whatever they have, right? But in order to access more weaponry, they have to go to the car, they have to have some other way to get it. Well, I think the solution that they're gonna present to you tonight is a good one. But obviously, as I sent you the email, it's something that this board has to vote on and recommend before we can move forward. This is beyond operational. This is something that you have to recommend. So, in saying that, I'd like to invite our guest, Sheriff Beasley and Chief Walz, to come up and explain a little bit about the safe. I think we have to pull up, right? If you need to show the video. Completely up to you and answer any questions that y'all might have.
Sure. I learned something tonight. We gotta bring goodies if we're gonna get stuff.
It helps.
My apologies about that. I'm learning as we go. Doc, if you wanna go ahead, if you guys kinda wants in there, I'll kinda explain how we come about this. This is about the safe that we're talking about looking to put in the schools. So, I'm gonna start off this by saying it's a very sad situation that we have to stand here this evening and talk about trying to put safes and guns in our school systems. It's bad enough we have to have officers in there with guns already. What you saw on the video right there, the, all the guns, if they were showing you what can be put in there, obviously, we're not looking to put that many guns in there. But what we are looking at, I had Jason Allen and Heather Isington with our two SROs. And I asked them to help us go across the state, talk to different agencies about what they're doing with their, in their school systems. We found that there's a couple of them that actually have backpacks for the officers that have collapsible rifles inside the backpack that they are required to have with them all day throughout the school day. And if they, or if it's not on their back, it has to be in their office and right beside them at all times. Obviously, because you have a weapon inside that backpack. I don't know that I'm totally for that. I don't like it just because of the capability. You can sit it down and maybe walk off and forget, or a fight break out and you're not able to leave it or something. We don't want that. But with this safe here, back in September, we were at a Sheriff's Association conference, Chief Walz and I. We came across the guy, had a bunch of vendors there, and this guy had these, had the safe there that we were able to lay hands on, look at right there, you know, and physically touch. Very impressed with it. I'm a hunter. I'm an avid Second Amendment. And I have a couple of safes that my wife does not like in our house anyway because they're big. But I'm impressed by this safe that we see. As you saw on there, there are a couple different. You have the, there's a keypad that you can actually do a key override, I mean a numerical override, but it also has the thumbprint. Our idea is only the SROs will have the thumbprint, period, end of story. And we can, we have the option going there and deleting that thumbprint. And if we put a new SRO in school, we can put the new thumbprint in. Chief Walz, myself, and Chief Williams would have the numerical override, and that would be it. Absolutely, nobody else would have any kind of access to this. And the only reason we would have it is God forbid something happened to that officer or got sick and we need to get in there. We have to have access to get into it. We are looking at equipping the officer with the rifle, just like you saw the one putting in the safe right there. Dr. Combs, when I sent this information to him, has anybody got a copy? When I sent Dr. Combs the email, you know, when you stop and think about, seconds matter, right? When we start talking about lives, and you hear that all the time with fire, EMS, ambulance, seconds, seconds count, right? So do our children's lives when we're sitting here in the school system. By the time that officer reacts to gunfire, realizes what's going on, runs out to the car, they gotta go through that lock, know where they get out that locked door, they gotta get into the patrol unit. They have to turn the key on to activate the unlock system for the rifle. Then, they have to get the rifle, then they have to come back in and key their way into the building. So, we're talking about a lot of downtime right there. Where if these safes, and we've been to each site and looked at the officer's offices that they have there, these things will fit in those offices. So, it would be behind the locked door, number one, when the officer wouldn't in there because of the rifles there. And I do, I feel very secure myself about this particular safe. If not, I certainly wouldn't be trying to put a safe with a gun. And again, I understand it's 2023, and it's hard to believe that we're sitting there having to have a discussion about this. But this is where our world is today. And that's what Chief Walz and I were talking about when we first got here, we put in the parking lot. Look at the things our nation does not stand for anymore, and we wonder why. But here we are with active shooters. I never would've thought in my 32-year career so far that I'd be sitting here talking about active shooters one day in schools and businesses, places like that. So, anyway, going back to the safes. You know, this is something that when I pitched it to Dr. Combs, he was very interested and made me looking at, from what you were telling me, about putting in all the schools across the county. And of course, my concern is the two that, where we have. But I would also have concern that the same officers in the other schools would have to do the same thing that I just laid out where they had to run it to their car as well. We're wasting time when we do that. When you have to look at taking care of somebody, an active shooter, we have to get there, we have to be quick. And you saw it was four seconds from the time they punch that and run their finger across it, the same thing in four seconds. So, it's, we waste, we can't waste that time. We have to be ready to act. We hope it never happens, but, you know, what we hope, a earthquake never happens, but we know one day it's gonna happen. We hope tornadoes don't happen, but we know they do. We just have to be prepared. So, you know, I guess I stand here for Dr. Combs and I ask you and I urge you to look at this and just move forward. I'd ask you to move forward with, help us get these safes and get these SROs, the equipment inside that school that they need to react and do as quickly as possible.
And so, my recommendation would be, of course, you know, y'all discussed, my recommendation would be that you allow me to talk to the sheriff and the vendor and all that and go ahead and purchase enough of these safes that we can put one in each one of our school buildings, which would be 14. Remember, we have 15 schools, but ALC and Forest Floor are the same building. So, all 14 buildings, we would have them installed, put in there. We'll cover the cost of it. As a matter of fact, I've already talked to Glenn about possibly some of that safety funding we have could use for some of this. But we would incur the cost for it and put it in there and then, you know, train everyone on usage. I'm sure you could help me get with the other law enforcement officials and make sure that they know how to use it as well. But that would be my recommendation to the group. And the call, tell them how much it. There, what was it, 2,500?
Twenty, 2,560 per unit.
Yeah, I knew it was around 3,000.
Chief Walz, actually, after Dr. Combs kinda read his intent, that he was, I think, what he was thinking about, Chief Walz reached out to the guy yesterday and spoke with him. And they're going to, each unit weighs over 200 pounds. And of course, that's about $300 in shipping costs per unit. But they're gonna weigh, if we buy over seven of them, they're gonna weigh all the shipping costs for.
That's good.
Or the installation.
Or the installation.
They install them also? Or do we have to?
For feet. It's not cheap, but the way John told me is they're very simple to install, like a maintenance man should be.
So, our maintenance personnel can provide those. That's who's.
They have, they can be bolted into the floor and/or the wall, studs in the wall.
That's what I was gonna ask, how we were gonna approach installing them. I did read that they are, you can bolt them into the floor. So, when looking at all of the schools, y'all got this space for each one to go into, into their offices?
Right, and most of, if we bolt it to a wall, you know, most of ours in those areas would be like a cinder block wall. But my suggestion would be we look at the floor first because you're gonna have a, you know, you're gonna have a concrete floor in all those buildings and we can smack bolts down in that floor and mount them and they'll be there.
We're actually purchasing two of these for our courtrooms as well right now. To do the same, the same idea with our court doors. We're gonna put these rifles and stuff easily accessible right there in the, at the courtrooms. Same thing, they had to run.
Do we have to seek any other government authorization, like from the state or feds or anybody like that, to put those in our schools that you're aware of?
No, not that I'm aware of.
There are several schools in the United States that already has these. They're already working. I think Sheriff has a video that's actually in a school in Georgia right now, the four-second video that shows you, I said four-second, where it takes nearly four seconds. This officer runs to the school, runs into his office, hits it, opens it up and has an AR in his hands. And you see the time at the bottom, it took them four seconds. Four seconds, opened the safe and have the rifle in a second.
There was one more link, I don't know if they want to see it up.
Dr. Combs had spoken to me about it a few days ago. That was before the meeting. I think it's a great idea. I think it's have to, I think it's a have-to case.
I feel like a door locker is safe enough that we wouldn't have to like reinforce the offices just so the kids could get in there, so, you know, instead of the key, would we wanna reinforce the entry?
Yeah, I would say no. I'd lean that up to your pleasure, however you think, but I think it like this, if it's, if it's good, if that lock is good enough to hide our children behind right now from an active shooter, it should be good enough to keep them from our other offices.
But then, getting into the safe itself would be a whole other thing. So, the only thing I would, you know, if the board went forward with this this evening, the only thing I would check on, I just, I would double-check with our insurance carrier and just, that would be probably something we need to make sure they're aware of. But I don't see any kind of issue with that, but we do need to make them aware that these will be in there.
And the company would supply y'all the information. They hired the top company in the United States to break in. And, and the company would supply y'all the information. They hired the top company in the United States to break into the safe. And they have it in writing saying, the only way you're gonna break into the safe is cut through steel. You cannot get in it. They cannot get in it. And, and he's, I haven't seen that, but he says he has the documentation.
Yeah.
How many guns will they use?
So in this particular safe here, the one that costs twenty-five sixty, uh, there would be rifle, uh, extra magazines for the rifle, and a camera or helmet.
Okay, so just one.
Yeah.
Is there any, uh, there were, what's the word of the board on this? Um, do, do we have a motion to purchase these? I have a motion, uh, by Mr. Jenkins, second by, uh, Mr. Kirk. Uh, the motion would be to purchase fourteen safes and go forward with it, correct?
Yes, sir.
I question, I mean.
Not questions. Go ahead.
I think, uh, you're pretty sure the money situation would be okay for us, this would be.
Yes, sir. To do this. Yes, sir, it wouldn't be a problem. We can, even, even if we didn't get, you know, like I said, I'm talking to Glenn about pulling out any kind of safety money. But even if not, we could always pull it out of maintenance, out of the bank, you know, we just, we just received the. Two hundred and fifty grand out of, you know, for, uh, maintenance contingencies, we could always use that money if, if needed.
Thirty, thirty plus now.
So we're, what we're making a motion to vote on tonight is to allow you to go forward with purchasing these, or.
Yes, sir.
Arrangements to purchase.
Yes. And work with the sheriff in doing that, is, work, work with Sheriff please.
Any other, uh, questions about it or any more discussion?
I just, I just wanna say, from, from former law enforcement, uh, carrying a backpack, I've done it, I've had it, I've broken down a rifle. He just without carrying another backpack, and an officer carries them up with him home every day.
Right.
That it's, it's hard enough to, to have nothing else to keep, you know, the liability with. A fight break down, and he has to sit it down to break it off, some kid grabbing it, running off, and they.
Right.
Even, even if it was a camera on backpack, it, and they're still got.
I still like the idea of it.
I don't believe it. It's a, it's a strain.
I think we have to make it easily, readily available for the officer, but we also have to be as safe as possible.
The backpack idea, I'd say, it's, it's an extra weight, and they can burn it again a couple of hours each year. They've gotta worry about, this is too simple.
This is a little run, your kids' lives are too valuable.
Right, that's right.
You know, sitting there watching those kids enjoy the little robot thing right there, just, uh.
Yeah.
It's our future.
Right.
It's our future, we have to invest in it.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those, motion passed. Thank you, Sheriff, please, and Chief Walls playing here.
And, uh, we'll bring treats next time.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Pizza, pizza and ice cream.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
That's all I had in my report unless y'all have questions for me, and, um, I think Mr. Fields is next on the agenda, y'all, unless you have a question for me. I know one, one question was, okay, I'm just gonna throw this out there because, you know, you never know until somebody asks the question, right? Somebody asked me the question, so are we gonna provide, uh, the weapons for the safe? The answer to that is no.
No.
We don't use school funding to purchase weapons, so no, it's just for the safe. Law enforcement supplies whatever they need for that safe. Absolutely.
That's right.
I think it's a good investment, uh, I would do it.
Okay, awesome. Thank y'all.
All right, uh, Doc, uh, Dr. James Fields, Mr. James Fields, the man with many hats.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Hey, in November, I reported that we had fifty-nine out of district students, we now have sixty-three. But we are contemplating moving the fee from seven fifty to a thousand dollars if Dr. Combs is willing to, to listen to me here in the picture. I did do a little research, Fayette County, Haywood County, and Lauderdale County, they don't have, uh, out of district opportunities. Cariaville charges forty-two hundred. Four fifty if you live in Shelby County. Bartlett charges forty-one hundred. Germantown charges forty-nine hundred. Madison County doesn't charge anything, and I thought that was interesting, so. Uh, they told us if the kids have transportation to get there, they'll, they'll take them, so this says, this says something about them. Tipton County, we charge obviously seven fifty. And I think our product, you know, compared to Cariaville, there's other, uh, municipalities, we're just as good. So I was thinking, you may ask, why just a thousand? So I'm afraid if we push, if we raise it two or three hundred percent, we're gonna lose the kids that we have. So I just think a gradual increase, uh. I think that's the direction we ought to go. So it's something that we're probably gonna bring before you here in the next couple of months.
You said we're at sixty-two, or is that what you said?
Sixty-three.
Sixty-three, or sixty-four.
We have a couple more applications, but we have sixty-three that's paid and they're in school and everything is.
Mr. Fields, did you know what Arlington charges?
I didn't check Arlington.
Is that something they pay per month or is it all about?
It's, it's for the year.
So they write a check for the amount right then?
I'm not sure, but I know that's their, that's their yearly fee.
Right.
Now here, you have to pay all at once.
Right. Well, that's, that's what I was asking, if they paid it in installments or broke down, just depending on their financial.
I don't know. Unfortunately, we had a non-compliance issue at one of our SACC sites. The, it's, it's a one to ten ratio, one of those per, uh, for ten kids. This particular day, there were seventeen kids and one worker. Even though our site, our county site director got there, she can't work in two capacities. So if she's there for, obviously, she's the site director, so she can't be a worker. And so when the auditor, auditor was there, we only had one worker. And the reason I'm lifting it, I mean, our plan is to hire, uh, an extra worker at, at each site. Now, that's the plan, but, you know, we're having trouble hiring anybody. So to hire six or seven new workers, this, you know, that, that may be impossible. But if we continue to fall out, out of compliance, you know, we might have to look at decreasing numbers. Maybe closing a site and sending those workers to another site. So that's the reason I'm lifting it, because it, it is important, and I don't want you to hear out in the community, man, they closed drones, they closed, a Toca, they closed. So what? We may have to. I hope it never comes to that. But we, you know, it's just tough finding people to work with. So if you know anybody, if you know twenty years old, twenty to twenty-five, somebody looking for part-time work, it's, you know, it's a great opportunity.
I was gonna ask you, is, is it not legal for like seniors in high school to?
Well, we currently have, we have like nine high school students working. You know, but it's the same, you know, it's the same thing, it's, it's tough getting them to, to apply.
How many hours, and what's the pay, like how's it?
Uh, unfortunately, seven, what is the normal wage? It's seven, seven fifty. Uh, it's three thirty to, three fifteen to six fifteen, I think. So it's like three hours in the afternoon. And I think they open at six, so it may be also from like six to seven thirty.
Yeah.
But I don't know if we can get them, get them at that rate.
And for new board members too, let me throw this in there, and y'all correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this is like a self-sustaining program, like. What the parents pay to have the child stay there is basically how they, how all that revenue is generated to pay everyone, ain't that right? That's not money, the school system doesn't put money into that, it's whatever they pay. So if you wanna raise the pay for the workers, then you have to charge the parents more money. To, so that's kind of been a little bit of a, um, you know, a thing, so.
So that's, you talk about closing one down, you just, we don't offer it anymore, and then it's just not available, is that kinda how it would be?
Yes.
Site of service, I mean, it's just.
That site wouldn't be available, and we would send the workers at that site to other sites.
Yeah.
I, I hope it doesn't come to that.
Yeah.
Don't you have pretty good enrollment and all that? I mean, are you capacity or close?
Well, Montford Elementary and Otoka, and I wanna say Brighton, they're, they're the largest sites. Uh, the Covenant Inn, I don't think there's not, and that's, that's something we would look at. Where we have less kids, if we had to close a site, it would be where we have less kids.
Versus if you, uh, do raise the pay, and you're already, you're getting plenty income, it would, it could balance itself off. Because you have plenty of people coming, and if a person wants to pay you an extra dollar or whatever a week.
Yeah, well, actually, we raised the fee, we raised the fee this year.
Yeah.
I wanna say from, I wanna say from fifty to sixty dollars a week.
Geez, that's nuts.
So.
I have a question, it might be a bit too far out there. No, but did you have students, seniors, juniors, whatever? Come and do this after school, before school, or extra credit in some kind of class, or? I mean, it might be way off.
I don't think so.
I don't know, they have to be eighteen, number one, don't they? Uh, so that's, that's part of it, um.
Or encourage those future teachers of America that slide over there.
They do come over and help their day calling, FCLA folks.
They would have to be employees, I don't think they could do it with extra credit or anything.
Some liability stuff in there.
About American State, uh, students that would like to do that, maybe another.
Yeah.
We could advertise.
So you're saying it's one, one employee per ten students?
Yes.
Who are paying them seventy-five cents, I mean, seven fifty, so seventy-five cents per student.
Probably feels like that.
So it's only like two, two twenty-five a day per, per student. So it's only like eleven something dollars cost for the employee side. If you, if you had a per, you know, one employee per every ten.
Cheapest day, cheapest day here on the planet.
That's cheap, I know, that's what I'm saying, it's like, uh. If you're only paying three hours, you gotta make it worth their time to.
Yeah.
Want to come there, it's seven fifty, you know, go over for it.
That's where the problem is, is the pay.
But we, we'll continue to work on it and pursue it. No concerns in nutrition, have, this is a brain, she has been out all week six, so keep her in the prayers. Project to see things are going very well. I, I do plan to bring in a couple of site directors so they can. Show, show off and show some of the things they're doing at the sites in the afternoon. We served nine thousand three hundred eighty-three meals in November. Served six thousand seven hundred eighty-eight meals in December. Both months combined, obviously, December was a short month. Uh, both months combined reimbursement was over seventy thousand dollars, so that's great. Transportation, we, we, we've hired two new mechanics, and they're off to a good start, according to Charlie. Uh, we had two drivers retire at the end of the year. Those two positions have been filled. Of course, we're still looking for bus drivers. On December thirtieth, we had a bus accident on Porter's Bill Road by the post office, and I'm reading basically what Charlie, what Charlie gave me. Our bus was passed by an eighteen wheeler with little room to spare. The tire went off the pavement and the bus ran into the ditch. There were no students on the bus and no injuries. We have ordered three special education buses and two conventional buses, and there's, but there is no delivery date, so I don't know when we'll be on. That's what I have. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Fields.
All right, please, sir.
Yes, sir. Can I ask a report?
I'm sorry.
The sheriff, y'all, girl. The sheriff, y'all, I'm sorry.
No, he's new, y'all, don't laugh.
We're not gonna let you slide, son.
I think I got enough of y'all a couple of years ago. Um, but no, Mr. Fields asked me just to come give you an update on the programs that I work with, and, um. I, and I don't take much time, because I am not gonna be the one that talks and talks and talks, because I am gonna be in line, right? Okay, uh, for social workers, to let you know that, um, we did, we have our full, seven full-time social workers, which we had three previously. I oversee the social workers, uh, they stay very, very busy. Um, they are doing a really good job. We have seven really good social workers. Hopefully, they'll be here, come in, maybe towards the end of the school year, and just kind of talk to you how their year went. Um, Christmas, uh, they provided Christmas for about a hundred and fifteen students. They were, um, did y'all know about the donation from the church? We got seventy-seven hundred dollars, so, uh, with some help from some central office staff, they provided a lot of Christmas, some very good stuff, and that was through the social workers. Because we don't have the same, Salvation Army doesn't do their same toy drive like we used to use, so we kind of, the social workers put it together themselves. Schools did a whole lot of work with that, um, but our social workers are very busy, as you know, mental health is a, is a climbing. Issue in our schools, and I don't know whether the day goes by that they don't have something new come up that they're having to take care of, so, um, they're doing a great job. Nurses, um, we have a full-time nurse in every building right now. We started off with a few vacancies, we had one in every building. We just hired two PRN nurses, that means they come as needed. What happened was that there was a time that LeBaron was requiring them to be, or only hiring RNs, well, they let up all of that, so when some of our RNs left, we're able to hire two LPNs. Or an RN position, so we'll actually, by the end of this month, we hope the two PRNs will start, and they will fill in where the nurse is out. Um, or if we need extra help at some of the schools that have higher acuity. The Crestview Elementary is one that really needs some help. That nurse is, uh, busy from the time she walks in the door, so, um. That will help us out a lot, but didn't change the budget, uh, with having those, we will have two of it. Fifteen, fifteen full-time nurses plus a supervisor, um, is what we'll have. Any questions about nurses or social workers before I go on? COVID, right now, you know, it's, it's back, but we have not had a large number of absences. Um, teachers are here, students are here, and the COVID protocol is we, if anybody asks, we said follow your doctor rec, doctor recommendations, and we'll say you can go to the CDC website. But as far as the district, we don't have a specific policy regarding a, a student or a teacher that had COVID. You know, that's taking care of them and their physician. Coordinated School Health, uh, that's the, that's the grant that I work under, um, after this year, that money will go into the TISA funding. So we'll see how that, what that looks like next year, but, um, hopefully, we'll still have me around, I don't know.
That's definitely plan.
I know, thank goodness. Um, we, um, just bought new health, uh, curriculums that we'll, we'll be putting in place. We usually, right after TCAP is over with, is when the health curriculums will be in the. Elementary, middle schools. It's a curriculum we've used before, Michigan model, it was approved years ago. We just bought new books, it's all updated, so. I also work with the ELC grant, that is the Epidemiology Laboratory Capacity Grant we got from last year. They extended that grant, if y'all remember, it was a couple million dollars. We've spent most of it, but we still have a little bit to spend. That's what, when you were talking about the safes, my wheels, I was like, oh, you can move some of this money over there, and your wife can use that ELC money, but there is a little bit left, but it has to be spent by July this year. Um, we also got five thousand, uh, thirty thousand packs of Lysol wipes free that will be delivered next Wednesday. Will be distributing to all the schools. It's like forty pallets, um, and we will, each school will get two pallets, and the bus shop will get some, and. We'll probably make some donations to some community, but boys and girls club and stuff, but that's for a program called, I wrote that down here. I don't.
Trying to think, who made us aware of that? Was it, do you remember?
Millington.
Millington told, because they got a, a literal truckload. When they said there's a truckload, it's a truckload of Lysol wipes.
Yeah, it's, um, forty pallets and they're double stacked, and so we'll have to have all hands on deck next. Wait to get them out and get them stored, but we're gonna get them out to the schools for all the staff to have Lysol wipes, so.
Hey, but there was a survey we had signed off on, from a site that they do every year, maybe certain grades.
Drug Free Tipton.
Is that what that is?
Uh, that's, that's my guess. Was that it?
I don't, what grade?
Uh, he's eighth grade.
Uh-huh.
So what grade do they do that in, and then when do we get the results, or do we, do they share those results from that survey?
Um.
I mean, that's, that's just, that's telling you how prevalent drug use is.
Yes, it's eighth, tenth, and twelfth grade, is who does it, and, um, yes, that is something Drug Free Tipton does every two years. Um, they do the same grades, and those results.
So it's the same kids, okay.
They track and watch. I'm actually on the board for Drug Free Tipton, so that's the only reason I knew that so quickly. But, um, that's, you know, Drug Free Tipton is pretty much completely funded through grants. And so those surveys generate some of that money by being able to say, hey, you know, what's prevalent in the county? Is vaping, like we just talked about, you know, Juuling, you know, it's big, you know, is it, uh, an opioid thing, is it, you know, a, a meth thing, but. We just get a lot of drinking, we just get a whole lot of that through those surveys.
That is good information, and I would see how it was from years ago and how it's tracking.
And actually, Drug Free Tipton may put that, those results out somewhat, we can ask.
I think they do on their website, but, um, we usually, we get copies of those results, they're. They're really big, and it's a lot of numbers to go to do. If they could condense it and have a summary, that would be nice. We could present that at the board meeting, that would be nice.
Just curious, you know, I mean, it's.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't know.
I'll put it this way, it's, it's shocking and depressing.
Yep, there's nothing to it, the tragedy in Virginia with the first grade teacher getting shot. And I was having to talk, way to church was the first grade in a different district, but she was just mentioning how surprised you would be that kids, at first, that bite and hit. Is, is that stuff that our teachers have to put up with? Then how does a social worker, I mean, you, you know, do they help, or what's our program to help with those students, or do we track that in any way, or? Or how do you get to prevent a problem from getting something out of control?
Well, when, if a child is a new problem, you know, they would be referred from the teacher to the counselor and the social worker. Social worker can do, some of our social workers are certified so they can actually do counseling, one-on-one counseling. Um, if not, they will refer them to like P C S or Lakeside or other programs, which you have to have that parental involvement. A lot of times, that's the hardest part, is getting the parents to come in and sit down. I'm just thinking of a few incidences where they've worked and worked and worked with elementary children and the parent doesn't show up for the meetings. And then the next thing you do is you start to suspend them to, uh, alternative school, but yes, we had a lot of.
In some cases, you know, it's a manifestation of a disability, um, in, in a number of cases, it's a behavior, you know, we have behavior specialists and behavior training, the member of our, our teachers and they have to go through, um, but you know, and I think we presented this before, but behavior and, you know, uh, James is kind of over that, um, behavior the past two or three years is unbelievable. I mean, I've been doing this for thirty years and the last three years, I, I haven't seen behavior like I've seen in the last three years. Would that be an accurate statement, Mr. Fields?
Especially, uh, since Covid. What I've seen in my thirty-three years is the things that high school students usually do, uh, as far as violating the code of conduct, that's what our middle schoolers do now. The high schools, they're, they're just on a, they're on a different level, they're on a different plane. The elementary kids do what the middle schoolers were doing ten, twelve years ago. We have fourth and fifth graders, by the time they become juniors and seniors, they've been addicts, drug addicts for seven or eight years. That's what's sad.
It is.
And it's for a, a number of reasons.
Yeah, some folks say, you know, the time spent, you know, just by themselves during Covid or whatever, but you know, a lot of it's gonna be your social media. A lot of it's gonna be the easy access to what they can get, you know, we're getting ready to send out a letter again, we did one about two years ago. Actually, that the sheriff signed, and I signed, the sheriff signed it, um, that we sent out to all the companies and all the local establishments that put vape products out there, and we said, look, I mean, we're not gonna put up with that, you cannot sell to our kids that are underage and we will, we will back up what we're saying, we're gonna, we're gonna find out if you're doing it, you know, that was kind of the letter that went out. Uh, Judge Peeler signed it, we had everybody sign it, it's about time to send that thing out again. Uh, you know, it's not just, it's not just the vape itself, it's what they can, what, what else goes in that vape. You know, there's so many other things that are poisonous that they're putting in there, just, it, it's, it's, it's rough right now, it, it really is, it's rough.
Seven, seven, about seven percent of the vaping citations that juvenile courts that they're getting is a three for five.
Seven percent.
About seven percent.
Do we have any, do we have any staff members that had Covid?
Staff members?
What about flu versus Covid?
We've had probably about more flu probably, um, and we had a lot of strep throat this year. It seems like it's kind of dying down right now within, um, as far as with students, but as far as staff, yes, we had Covid.
Any other questions for Ms. Yarborough? Thank you, Ms. Yarborough.
Thank you.
It's very, very serious. How am I asked?
Financial report, Mr. Phillips Yarborough.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Evening. Allow me to first begin by expressing my concern for any board members who may have prevented themselves to save for healthier eating habits for the new year. And you can tell by looking at me, I'm willing to alleviate the temptation. Uh, I'm gonna pass out a few documents here, take them down and pass it around. And I look forward to this transition to this paperless presentation.
Process.
Yes, sir.
Are these, I pass all these, or are these just?
This just.
This is your copy.
Save your special copy.
Here you have it.
Here we go.
They lay their way around?
Yes.
Should have three total copies.
I think you do.
That. Allow me to begin my report tonight, if you will, and bring into your attention a fallacy for which I am responsible in presenting previous amendment documents. Uh, I made an error in copying and pasting a column from the original budget presentation document into the amendment document you saw last month, which is why you'll notice the dates on these reports are the ones that you saw last month. These are with corrected copies and it was discovered during our presentation with the finance committee, um, earlier this month. And so I want to go over this with you so that you understand, uh, what the mistake was. If you'll take up the one forty-one first, which is pages one through ten. Uh, there were some, uh, revenue numbers inverted in the, in the top part there, the estimated revenues. And there was a different number reflected in fund balance, obviously my number initially had come from the comptroller's audit. I do believe, and so the content between that was the same. The amendments, there's no change to the amendments you all voted on and approved the, uh, in the one forty-one, none of that changed, I just wanted you to be aware that the, uh, for example, if you will compare this document to your previous document and look at the county property tax and the local ops and sales tax, they're essentially inverted. Uh, the amounts are different. And, uh, there may be one, I think, on business tax or extreme tax. Basically, underreporting, which is good for our behalf, seven thousand dollars on the top side. And then at the bottom will be the fund balance numbers that were brought in from the audit report in lieu of the, uh, county's budget document submission. On the second, on the one forty-two, uh, the error there, well, it wasn't error, so leave that up. That document was correct, there was a, uh, difference of opinion between Director Bailey and I on where the forty-seven thousand dollar literacy grant should be posted. Uh, I had been as transparent as possible, had left it in its disbursement accounts in the seven eleven hundred because I had not made a journal entry correcting the error and I didn't want to present the documents, uh, where they weren't. Uh, but I have moved that to a transfer outline item, so you'll notice on your previous document in the middle of page one in the seven eleven hundred series, it's gonna be forty-seven thousand dollars difference in that money, but you'll find that forty-seven thousand dollars on the back page where it says transfer out to other funds. The check was written in error, uh, out of those seven eleven hundreds here, so I left it where it was so that it would be a transparent report, uh, before the journal entry. And finally, on the one forty-three, the formulas did not, uh, carry over into the right column. The document, the information, the amendments did not change, the information did not change. The only thing was is the, uh, additions did not carry over in the formula from the left column to the right column. So I want to make you all aware of that, uh, that that had happened.
Can I ask you a question about the fund balance, Billy?
Yes, sir.
Is it, is it that difficult for people to determine what our fund balance is? Is it constantly changing, money coming in, money coming out? Because this, this number on here now, this is as effective when?
So the column on the left are the numbers that were presented in the county's budget resolution document. Here, here's the issue with it, if I may, I'm gonna sit back and grab something I brought, just so, we've had a number of discussions on fund balance.
Didn't we hear like last time or fairly recently nineteen or twenty-two million?
So I want to show you an example, if I might, now, I didn't make copies because I didn't know if we would have this conversation or if, so I mean, what depth and I don't know, those trees. But I, may I approach you over there, Sharon? We can pass this around and look. I just wanted to show you, uh, what the documents look like and why they're ever changing, even in the county's documents as well as ours. Fund balance is a moving target, to answer your question, if I get to my place here.
I was gonna say, question number two is, yes, it does move around a little bit, but.
So this was the previous year, this is the budget we're operating out of, this is the previous year's budget. Now, you know, if we ended at twenty, we are, uh, we never spent nine million dollars in fund balance. I mean, you all know what you voted for. The other thing I want you to notice, this is the comptroller's audit report that was just presented in August of this year based on June thirtieth and numbers. And, you know, they audit the financials, uh, in their entirety, and this is fair, just a second, so don't forget the full exhibit. And then you can pass this around, I apologize, I don't have a copy, but we can send this around. This is page one twenty-one, the history of the documents that are listed in the back of the, uh, fund balance document. This goes over the financial position of the county based on the expenditures in the school budget, and it goes all the way through till it gets to the end. This is the fund balance as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, they say it's twenty-one million. That's comptroller, but if you look here, what does the county say it is? And so these are the same documents, the issue being, and I'm gonna show you another example. I brought in two trial balances, which is just a snapshot picture of the day that you take this report, right? So this picture, uh, happens to be December thirtieth, there's fund balance. Here is the same report taken today. So you see there's a four million dollar difference between these two numbers. The fund balance has been dropped four million dollars in fifteen days, right? It's just that the money is going in and, uh, coming out in debts and credits. No one, no one can give you a definitive answer on what fund balance is. Now, what I also did, and you're welcome to keep these documents, these are the explanations the comptroller publishes. If you want to look at that audit report, and I can show you on the board where to find it. Uh, and it's they, this is their explanation of how to read fund balance, this is from the comptroller's office. Because inside of fund balance. Well, now, there's two hundred and something basis, if you want to go read those, or is it specific to that?
I think Ikea and the comptroller, I think they work together.
Yeah, that's our plan. So, uh, I want you to be aware of that, that it does change, and there are certain sections of fund balance. So when we say fund balance, I don't want to give you an accounting lesson here, but I do want you to understand, because you know, I'm still learning too, obviously. But you have asset accounts, which is considered cash account, that's kind of like your checking account, so this is the way fund balance works, I'm gonna try to put it in layman's terms. You've got five hundred dollars in your bank account. You've got a direct deposit payroll coming in on Friday, but it's not there yet, and you've written two checks that haven't cleared the bank, what is your fund balance? In your checking account? You said what I'm saying, and that's what's happening in the county, so it may look like five hundred when you look at your check register. But your bank may show that you have a thousand because the two checks you wrote have not cleared the bank yet, and then the direct deposits coming in is gonna change both. And so you have to be able, so the easiest way to do it, and I didn't bring what I meant to do, there's another measurement. Every month, we get a bank statement from the county trustee, and we reconcile our books to the trustees' bank balance. And so if you look at that ending balance, it's gonna be different than those fund balance numbers you see. And she's gonna have recorded the debits and credits that came through in that month, and she's gonna show it ending by starting cash balance, debits, credits, and ending cash balance. And those are all different. That is why you've heard me communicate to you all before, I've been told by the folks that I've asked that's in the Government Finance Officer Association Comptroller's Office, they say you need to look at your fund balance in August or September is the closest picture you get to fund balance, where the actual true number is.
That's, oh, oh, you said August.
August or September.
Yep. And that's what this is here, end of July.
That's end of, that's June thirtieth.
Or that was June thirty.
That's June thirty. Well, let me back up, you're looking at the county budget document. So you gotta remember when we presented the budget, that budget's presented sometimes before some of the deferred receivables are in. I mean, I don't know, I don't get involved in what all Director Bailey does, that's the number they're working off of. That's where I made the error, and the thing was copying the other column where it was in April, May, when I presented the budget, in lieu of where it was when the budget document passed. So, what is fund balance? I'm gonna tell you, it's, right now, it's set between ten and twelve million, in my opinion, based on what I can figure it to be. Uh, you all know what you've appropriated to come out of fund balance for the expenditures. It's not been, uh, you know, over ten million dollars like it looks on some of those equations, if you look at it. I encourage you to talk to T S B A and ask them, how do you figure fund balance? And I promise you, you're not gonna get the same answer, right? Because I've talked to several professionals in the business, we've listened to Director Bailey, he's given an explanation, and maybe we can invite him one night on camera to come up and talk about fund balance. Uh, and see what his opinions are, or maybe someone else, because it is difficult. What I can assure you of is as conservative as Dr. Combs is, and I wouldn't let it get that low either. The state requires us to have three percent of our fund balance for our expenditures. We have to submit to T D O E every year when the budget is ratified by the commission. Dr. Combs has assigned a document that has all the financials listed that shows we have at least three percent of our budget in fund balance. Well, we have three to four times what they require us to have in fund balance. And so, I'm not the expert, that is a, uh, layman's explanation on fund balance. And so, uh, certainly I encourage you to ask other people, I just want you to know, because every time we ask, you know, Dr. Combs checks regularly, especially when he's doing a strategic plan and he's asking these questions. He can tell you that the other day we looked at the document and it showed it to be sixteen million. But there were deposits you had to come in and expenditures you had to go out, and you see from the report, it's already different.
Sixteen point five, exactly.
That's right.
Actually, and I'll tell you, that's about, that's about, believe it or not, as clear of an explanation as you can get about fund balance. So, um, you know, what I requested from, uh, CFO, Darty, was that, you know, at every board meeting, he give us an idea of what the fund balance looks like. Well, soon thereafter, I realized what that request was gonna entail, because it's gonna be all over the place. And so in the meantime, we've spoken with, um, CFOs in at least two or three other districts the same size as us to get their input on it. Comptroller, uh, Director Bailey, we've spoken to a lot of people, and you get a varying answer there on what that is. But I, I, I know this for sure, and that is that we would never be as poor as stu, as stewards, as you just said, to ever spend that money down where it was dangerous, we would never recommend to do that, and I know that we're not anywhere near that. Um, so, you know, the three percent, there's no doubt, I think we, we calculated the other day too, just for the sake of saying it. Short of a zombie apocalypse or the Lord coming again, please hurry, uh, that, um, we're not gonna see a bigger emergency or something happen like we had in that Covid situation a few years ago, right? During the Covid situation, we calculated, so our folks were off about ten and a half weeks during that time, from March to the end of May. We calculated total around thirteen million dollars that we continued to pay to our people who are off work and we never get down into fund balance one time. So, you know, that money continued to come from a state that they brag on what their ready day fund is all the time, so they're soluble. You know, a county that's debt-free and then our, uh, fund balance that's just fine. I don't see a situation where we're ever gonna get out, I mean, that was, that was rough and we never dipped into fund balance. So, um, I think we're, I think we should be very comfortable with it. Now, again, I'm not saying, hey, let's go out and buy four million dollars worth of stuff and pull it out of fund balance, I'm not saying that, but I think we're very comfortable. Um, but again, if you ask five people, you're gonna get five different answers on what our fund balance is right now.
And I, I encourage you, I, I actually asked you, go read these budget documents from the comptroller. Ask people at T S B A, Ben Torres, ask them about fund balance, go home and Google G F O A fund balance and read the articles that talk about fund balance, it's all over the place. And the other thing, I mean, we could make it more confusing in our account, essentially. Some people say, well, when you're talking about fund balance, are you talking about equity, or you're talking about assets? Assets are cash and, and other assets, obviously, and then there are liabilities that we owe, and then the bottom, there's the equity, which is, you know, we don't have, uh, we're not like the private sector where we have the bottom line, we have a net position, is how the comptroller reports our financial position, it's a net position. And so that's when all of those things are, this, that budget document they provide is a snapshot at June thirtieth. And so you gotta remember that when we close the books in June third, on June thirtieth of every year, there are deferred receivables that, I mean, there are deferred receivables that, I mean, cash we're owed by the state that still hasn't come in that really, in modified accrual accounting, counts on June thirtieth. And so we have to give projections to the comptroller on deferred receivables, uh, and post those numbers. And that's what they're doing in the modified accrual basis, is they're looking at those deferred receivables and posting them to the book, but that's not the actual picture of June thirtieth either in modified accounting, accrual accounting. It's not because the money's not there yet. So it's, uh, anyway, it, it can be complicated. It's not complicated, as long as you know that you don't take out more than you put in. And, and we're not, this board has not, Dr. Combs has not asked to pay for any recurrent expenditures out of fund balance, everything has been one-time expenses. The other thing is, is, uh, I know the drums have been beaten before. How much money that belongs to the kids do we keep in the bank, draw an interest and not use on the kids? And I, I think, uh, I joke with Dr. Combs all the time that I think that when people come ask for money, I want them to bring their credit score before they tell us how to run the money. I want to see what your credit score is, right? Let's have, see how you manage your money before you just have to manage our money, because this is the taxpayer's money, and we've got to be good stewards with the money. Uh, but also, we have an obligation to take care of our children. And that's what we've done. I, I think we could put up against what we've taken out of fund balance in any argument, and I think we would stand on what we've done to benefit the kids. And so I say all that to say, Mr. Benson, I can tell you exactly what fund balance is. I can give you a projection. And so, and I invite you to get somebody that's more, that has more than eighteen months in to do it. But anyway, I digress, unless there are other questions on fund balance.
And even, even that report, though, is showing based on what our budget was, that, that's going back from the budget from, that we set in June, not what we've actually gone through the course of the year.
That's right. So he's, those numbers is carried over from the previous year. Mine is, you know, obviously the expenditure would have been, but it's still a snapshot.
Sure. Guess you bet.
And would anybody else like to see these documents? And I encourage you, call Director Bailey, four seven six oh two one nine, get his opinion on it. He's dealt with it many years longer than I have. And, uh, I'm sure he can help you. And then like Dr. Combs said, we've talked to some other finance directors too. Again, all right. May we move forward a moment?
Sure.
All right. So you have this electronically. Thanks to Mr. Renee, uh, who is so efficient always. Uh, but I'm, I'm gonna give you a, uh, paper copy of the amendments. And I am frequently asked by an individual on the finance committee that will say, is this the document the school board looked at? Well, this document I'm showing you tonight is not the document that the finance committee is going to see. And I'm gonna start passing these out. And the reason I say that is there, there's crisscross, so just take what's one and take the next one. So that document you all typically see like the ones I just showed you, uh, may I have more of it? So this document that you see right here, this is really not a school board document. We do this document because this is what the county finance committee requested to be in this format, which requires us to take it out of our format and put it into an Excel spreadsheet. And so what you're about to see is the paperwork the school district seized, uh, on ours, and we're gonna take these grants up individually. The first one, you're gonna see an email from Ms. Marion Samuel, our federal program director, asking for amendments, uh, in the consolidated, uh, school funding application. Now, remember, or allow me to remind you, as we get the papers passed around, the component, the components of consolidation are Title One, Title Two, Title Four, IDEA Part B, and IDEA preschool. Those are the five grants inside of that budget. Ms. Samuel takes care of three of those, and that's the ones you're gonna look at now, Title One, Title Two, and Title Four. We just had a, uh, a series of deposits from the state. They've increased our allocation. So leftover allocations from the previous year have cycled in through the budget this month. If you'll notice, on this first page, right here, just like this, just like this page right here. Did we get our crisscross? On here, it said, you'll see where it said January the ninth, on the most recent approval date. That is the date the money did our vote, or did our, uh, accounts. And so, uh, but you have these scanned in too. It's, it's, these, these are the documents you should have on the first page. All right. So let's start on the top. You'll have an email from Marion Samuel. Does everybody see that? So on that document that you have from Marion Samuel, it is stapled. And behind that document is her Excel spreadsheet showing where these new allocations came in and where she's highlighting in yellow where she's asking for them to be applied. Not that she's asking, but also where the state says we can spend the money. These documents that you see right here are the actual documents as they are in the state system. And if you'll look at the, uh, the fourth or fifth line down, it says Title One Part A, Title Two A, and Title Four. Do you see those on these blue sheets? They will assimilate with those spreadsheets that you see with Marion. Now, let me tell you that here's the other convoluted piece of education that some people don't understand. Since Marion sent me this document on Friday, on Friday, December thirtieth, saying, hey, would you do these amendments in Revision Five? On January the ninth, they put more money in the budget Marion's not had time to address. That's how quickly this cycle takes. And what is gonna be funny about this, you all will vote on this tonight. We've gotta wait until February to get it to the county commission. And by the time we get to the county commission, get it ratified, it'll be irrelevant. And we will have, we will bring more of this to you in February to address these additional allocations. This is constant. And that's why it's a lot of numbers and a lot of changes and a lot of grants in one place. But I want you to see this so that no, that it's not sensationalized on an Excel document, okay? So you can understand what that is. So what I'm asking, Mr. Chairman, is a motion from the committee to accept the amendments to the 142 general purpose school fund in Title One Part A, Title Two A, and Title Four, as reflected in the E-Plan documents on January the twelfth.
Y'all heard the question, we have a motion. Motion by Mr. McCann, accepted by Mr. Farrell. Are there any questions, but those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Propose? Motion passed.
Right. The next documents we're gonna have, and I'll tell you what I'll do while I'm on my way around the counties.
Is this the one from Sharon?
These are from Sharon.
Yeah, these are all on your, these are on your.
That's right. Mr. Renee took care of me on that.
Right.
But I was old-fashioned and had made copies because I wanted to make it for that one. So I apologize again for the trees that sacrificed for our benefit of the education.
Come on, chief.
Next month.
What in the world?
All I can say is Mr. Renee's like, I will help you. And I'm like, I got it, Mr. Nate. He's like, no, I will help you. Thank you, Mr. Renee.
Thanks for having me.
All right. So you'll see on these, there's two emails from Sharon Ballou, which is, uh, her, you can see the top of the emails, um, what that granted, the IDEA Revision Five, and the next email are ARP IDEA revisions. You will find those, uh, corresponding grants in those E-Plan documents that are in the back. Again, you'll see that Sharon's emails dated January the fourth and January the sixth, reflecting documents. Now, look at the state documents. They posted more money January the ninth. So they've not even had the time, again, to make all of these come through. And, and speaking to Sharon and Marion, they've been notified by their fiscal consultants that they're gonna be pushing these allocations back out to tell them where to spend money. So again, we'll be bringing more amendments even on these that they score around. The issue being, if we don't get this done, we can't spend the money. You know, uh, legally, we've gotta have it in the line lines, voted on by this board and ratified by the commission really to spend it. Uh, I'm looking for more guidance because this board put two million dollars, four million as it exists now, in there to cover expenditures to bankroll federal, essentially. The problem is if we start spending money outside of accounts, especially personnel or salary accounts, I'm nervous about that without you all approving it. I wouldn't wanna do that. You know, and I try to be as transparent as I can, but we also have obligations to make the programs work when the money's here. And you gotta remember Marion and Sharon and those program directors are required to spend a certain percentage of this funding in time periods, about a quarter. Well, if we're taking six weeks to get it through the process, they're six weeks out of the quarter, then it's spent the money.
Except we're, we're bankrolling, we're, we're putting the money up while we're waiting for the federal dollars to go back.
That's correct.
Got it.
And so then if you'll notice, and another reason I want to show, that's a great question, Mr. McCann, I'm gonna show you one of this document. Uh, it's all the same, now I see that. If you'll look on the backside of this document, you'll see a section that says reimbursement request. So these are all the reimbursements that we've read, that we've asked for. So money we've spent, we turn in our documentation to the state on this grant, and they reimburse us those, that, those dollars. And so our money's sitting there filtering it, and that money comes through and makes up for that. And so that's how that works. You can go to E-Plan as school board members and look at these same documents. There's no smoke in mirrors. It's all there. You can see the dates that they change, uh, when they make these adjustments. It's just, uh, for example, I'm gonna show you one on Marion, not to confuse you, but to have you understand, uh, on Title One's document, what I, what we're dealing with. Look at the document that says Title One Part A. Gonna give you the first one. Says Title One Consolidated, Title One Part A, on the color blue sheet. Y'all seen that? Make sure everybody's there. So if you'll look at the back number where it says adjusted allocation in the top back, y'all see that number that says two million, seven hundred eighty-eight thousand, five hundred ninety-four dollars and sixty-seven cents? Y'all see that? We'll go down to the next column, and what does it say our total allocation is? Two point eight million. That money is not, we've not been told where to spend it yet. And so those are the amendments we'll be coming back for our next go-around. So it's already in our E-Plan system and not pushed out to our program directors nowhere to put it. And that's a constant cycle, as you all have seen as we go through the year. And we're proud of that fact because we're getting money to spend on our kids, right? But it's just a process. So, uh, Mr. Chairman, it's now I would like to present a motion to the board for consideration to take the IDEA Revision Five and ARP IDEA revision as presented in the E-Plan documents, uh, amendments for approval.
Do we have a motion? Motion by Mr. McCann, accepted by Mr. McClure. Any questions, but? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passed.
And just for Mr. Renee, I know she's taking notes. It's IDEA Part B, IDEA preschool, and ARP IDEA Part B funds in that last amendment. And so those are the amendment requests that we would ask you all, and thank you for passing. We will take to the county commission, the finance committee in February. It will be presented on an Excel document that does not look like this. It looks like the other one. It will reflect these numbers that you all passed tonight, even though by the time it gets there, the numbers will be completed. But, uh, any questions, Mr. Chairman?
I don't. Do y'all have any questions?
Clear as mud.
Clear as mud.
Can you tell us what our, can you tell us what our fund balance is?
The fund balance you're talking, that's just ours. That ain't got nothing to do with the county's.
No, sir, that's our, the county has their own fund balance, and they deal with, they deal with the same things, uh, that we do. If you'll look, if you pull the trustee's reports on theirs and you pull their financials, the two numbers are not gonna match during the year, because they're doing the, they're all modified accruals, much like most of us are, and it's the same situation.
I mean, it is all under the umbrella of the counties. That's just, that's our portion of it, of the counties. That's right, yeah.
And I hope I didn't go in, I mean, I don't wanna go into too much detail, but I also don't want to withhold information where you don't understand. So feel free to ask me more questions. Uh, and I always make this offer to you all, and I make it to the finance committee as well. Always bring my laptop. We'll sign into E-Plan, and we can go sit there and look at anything you wanna look at, because everything we have is obviously published and buried.
And then the, uh, this is probably a good time to say that the February meeting, we're gonna have a little bit of a budget. Isn't that right? Six o'clock or whatever, the February meeting?
Oh, so we're here?
A work session?
A work session. Is it prior to that day or is it that same day?
It's that same day.
Is it that same day?
Prior to the board meeting?
Yes.
That's when we said it, wasn't it?
Yeah, I think so.
Yes, sir.
And, and I would think prior to the board meeting, those extra meetings.
So, Mr. Benson, I wanna warn you, because I mean, we talking really fast in that meeting because there's a lot of information to cover in a short period of time.
You need an hour, or do you need to talk to them?
Oh, no, thirty minutes is not enough.
Okay.
The, uh, at, at least an hour, I would say.
Okay, that's good.
I mean, we could spend four hours on it. It depends on how much.
Time on it, you know, you just get, you can just take in so much, you know?
That's right.
Hours better.
Yes. The, uh, again, y'all have, it's, it's, the school district has a great system in place on how it works. And, uh, I mean, it's pretty fit and dry. They give us the money, tell us what to spend, and all we spend it, we account for. When we make mistakes, that's why they have a thing called a journal entry in accounting, and you go journal entry, the mistake into the right account. And, uh, it's like I tell people when they work in finance, when they come in there and they're, it's urgent, and I say, well, has anybody been? And they said, no, has anybody been to be there? No. And did anybody steal any money? And when I say no to all those questions, I say, we don't have a crisis. We can fix whatever happened. And so, uh, I tell you that. From somebody that makes mistakes, I would be, you know, somebody that makes mistakes, I'll give them some grace.
I like grace.
Any other questions for Mr. Ballard? Thank you, uh, Mr. Ballard. Just so that. Thank y'all for recording the meeting, so next month I can go back here when it's in. Dr. Combs, you got one handy thing to add?
Uh-huh. Just wanna say, uh, thank y'all. I actually heard, I told the principals this the other day. I heard that it's not kosher. You're not supposed to say happy new year, like after last Saturday. You're not supposed to say it. When after a week has passed, but who cares? Happy new year. Things seem to be, you know, going well. Uh, we should have some, some better numbers coming to us, Billy, about TISA. Um, later this month, maybe February. We just don't have it yet. I mean, right now, we're still under that prediction or that estimation that we got March twenty twenty-two that said we're supposed to get about ten point five million more. Uh, we're still under that, but, uh, we don't know yet. They're gonna give us an updated number later this month.
Well, Mary Ann Dursky, the CFO of the State Tennessee Department of Education, sent out an email and a finance director's letter basically saying, the rules haven't all been passed yet.
Correct.
So it's still an estimation on rules that haven't passed yet.
That's right.
Is anyone, uh?
I'm good. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Uh, anyone else have any questions? We have our legislative day on the hill. It used to be called downhill legislative and legal institute. Coming up sixteenth, seventeenth February at Cool Springs, Anderson Suites, I believe it's Wolf's thing. So y'all be ready for that, and, uh, we'll, we'll see you next meeting.